Good afternoon. This is the meeting of the Titan Commission on Disability. It's Thursday, the fourteenth of April twenty twenty-two. The time is four thirty-five PM. And if we could start with the pledge allegiance of pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence for our friends and their dying otherwise who have passed away. To the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and is so liberty and justice for all. So first thing I want to do is have everyone introduce ourselves, who we are. My name is Jonathan Gale and I am the ADA Coordinator for the town of Titan and Chair of the Disabilities Commission. Ken?
Yeah, Ken, you take your own lead sign for the board of selection.
Nicole?
Nicole Mallow, member.
Kevin, Kevin Smith, member. Thank you guys very much. Do you have the agenda in front of you?
I have it in front of me. We've got old business next, review of the middle school grant project.
So for the ramp project, the middle school, I've kept it on there because I think when we had our last meeting, I mentioned there were still a few little things to be done with it. Kevin and I met with Damian, who is the buildings and grounds person for the school department. And with the gentleman who did the contracting work, we walked around, excuse me, we walked around the building, pointed out a few areas that need to be cleaned up a little bit. Also, a little bit of area in front of the main ramp where the tar has sunk down a little bit. So Bill has said that he plans to clean up all of the areas around the other doors. He's got to do a little bit of scraping and grinding and maybe a little bit more cement in a few spots that he's going to put in. Latest on that is we got an email or text message the other day that said he hopes to have it done by the end of this weekend. And then as far as the little bit of payment goes in front of the ramp area, right in front of the middle school by the main doors, as I said, sunk down a little tiny bit. We're going to visit that and see how and whom we're going to have fill that in. It's a small project, but we just want to make sure it gets done before the end of the school year it gets corrected. So Kevin, is there anything you want to add on that?
The next agenda items update on MOD project grant status. So thank you for reading this.
So for the project grant status, a couple of things have come to fruition since our last meeting. The Board of Selectmen has approved the contract to move forward with our new website and the new design of the website. That will be about a six-month project. Revise, who is the company who is serving us now, is still going to be servicing the contract, so we're not going to be without a website and that'll be kind of on a monthly rental basis, if you will, after June for a couple of extra months until probably the end of September. The new site, I think, is going to be a vast different look from what we have now. Kevin, you were involved in reviewing some of the material as well for the new site, so you may want to add something in there. I think what it's going to do, first of all, is everything's going to be sleeker looking. Everything's going to be described for persons with disability, for audio description or all text, if you will, for pictures. It's going to have a lot of other bells and whistles that make communication for people with a lot of different types of disability much easier and much more comfortable to use. It will be kept updated. The staff of the town who are going to be posting to the website are also going to be given extensive training on it. So it will be about a six-month process. We're probably going to be starting with a schedule that's coming out shortly, working with the town departments and administrators to start to put all of the parameters together on what's going to happen and where things are going to be and how they're going to be located with the design structure as well. And that'll be working with the new company to do that as well. So Kevin, again, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, so the one nice thing about, and it's the new, I know you mentioned the new company is Civics Plus.
No, I didn't.
Their, their designs are a lot simpler, so it's a lot, there's a lot more functionality and a lot, lot less like graphics going on. And the one thing that we, I think we all really liked about them is they actually use a third, third-party company to monitor all their ADA compliance. So it's not like there's somebody else holding them accountable for it, which, which is really good because it seemed like when we met originally with Revise, they had somebody in-house who was, to say the least, unimpressive with his knowledge of ADA compliance. So it was nice that this company has somebody else that, you know, monitors the changes that they make and then keeps it updated, of course.
And I think a couple of things that I like about it, besides the fact that so much more will be accessible for somebody like myself, is that it's going to be accessible for people with almost any kind of disability we can think of. And there'll be ways where individuals, even if something is not accessible, what this allows for is the individual, if you have a different accessible need, you can tweak it yourself through some settings so that for what you're looking at and what you are listening to or, you know, paying attention to one way or another, you can enlarge the print, change the, the coloring, change the background, do different things for you specifically. So I like that part of it also. Another part of it I like, which is for us, for example, as a commission and for me as the ADA coordinator, is, and even again, Nicole for you as the town nurse and Ken for you, Board of Selectmen and Kevin Parks and Rec, so there's something here for everybody, which is it's got an enormous amount of templates there now so that you can have forms, fillable forms or forms requests or document requests or we, or things you want to share. So if somebody wants to ask Nicole a question about something related to the health department in town or nursing in town, or they want to ask Kevin a question, or we know they're going to want to ask Ken a lot of questions, things like that, they can just fill out the form and as soon as they hit submit, it's going to go directly to you, Nicole, if that's the way it's earmarked. So, you know, that can be a good thing or a bad thing depending upon how flooded any of us get, but it allows for much easier access directly to the personal department it has to go through instead of one or two carriers having to share, fair everything out. So I like that also. Again, that, the plan right now is to have it up and running by the end of September. As far as other parts, everybody sees the new walkway in town for a town hall. I am learning how to drop the word ramp and call it walkway because that's what it is. It is below the grade that we have to have, which is awesome. It is wide for passing. It allows for wheelchair and a walker to pass each other at the same time. It's got a rail plate at the bottom. It's at the right level for the electronic door at the top of the walkway as well. Looks great. Supposed to open tentatively this coming Tuesday. And as far as I know now, that's the schedule. I don't think there'll be any change in that. And then the restrooms in town hall for upstairs will start the construction for the men's room next week and then go from there. The ramp for Old Town Hall should be starting fairly soon as well. Parks and Rec, Kevin, do you want to comment on Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so right now, there's the new walkway at the tennis and basketball courts, which is, there's a, again, it's a slight incline to enter, so you have wheelchair entry. On the tennis court end is a five-foot wide walkway that spans the entire fence line of, of the courts. And then you can enter into the basketball court that way as an accessible route. And we also added stairs on the, at the basketball court gate, so folks could kind of, you know, not, not have to traverse the whole path. They can just take the steps to get to the basketball slash. Street hockey area, Lane Field is currently under construction. We did hit a couple of hiccups that we've since sorted out, so we're going to get back rolling on that. Just a very good highway department has made a lot of contributions to that project. And then once that's completed, then we'll move on to schooling, but I'm thinking probably by the end of the month, I think we'll have both of those projects completed. And that wraps up the parks portion of the walkways. And then we also did, we purchased a hundred and sixty of the grass mats, which we were able to utilize this past weekend for the Easter egg hunt. We created an accessible route to, with a table with Easter eggs on it. And then we also utilized the mats next to where kids were taking pictures with the Easter bunny, so there was some accessibility on that end of the track as well.
By the way, thank you, Kevin, for all the things that you post on the ADA website all the time, all the pictures and all the, the other things that you post. You, you make sure it stays very up to date.
I know I keep forgetting to post our agendas.
I'm heading to my calendar, too.
As I was driving down, I'm like, I'm like usually so good at making sure I share agendas and I'm like, oh, would have been. Nice to put that on our, on the COD pitch, but.
Thank you for all you're doing for the, for the website. So the, except for the website itself, everything else in the grant is scheduled to be completed by June thirtieth as of now. Which I think is pretty amazing when you think that the grant didn't get funded until really, you know, two months ago. And we're getting all of this done in a short amount of time. So kudos to everyone in town who's helped and participated and support the projects. So thank you. The next.
Yes, on the new business, new ADA accessible voting rules.
So what's, what's come up is that the couple of things. First, potentially, we, you know, we have our three precincts in town. The, it's not the equipment, it's the booth itself. The voting equipment or machinery is intact. The voting booth that we currently have with the light and with the curtain is what's falling apart. And we'll probably, don't know if we can order new parts or needs to be replaced. The question we're waiting for from the state on, which I reached out on and also Marcus reached out on through the State Elections Commission, through the Secretary of State's office, is when we have a new voting booth singular, whether or not we have to have three booths, one for each precinct, even if it's in the same location, or we can one, use one booth with the accessible equipment for all three. So that's really what we're waiting for. Having said that, Mark also told me if we don't get an answer, and I suspect we'll have an answer within the next week on where we need to go with this, because there's nothing on a warrant article for asking for any expense or extra money for this at this point. But there is also, the same person who we need to get an answer from is coming out on the twenty-sixth of July to conduct a seminar for volunteers who are involved in voting. So if anybody wants to mark that on the calendar, the date that Mark gave you was March was July twenty-sixth. And that's for folks who are involved in the voting process in town. So regardless of anything, I'm sure we'll have an answer very shortly, but we certainly will have an answer for that day, too. Don't know if it'll be expensive or not, or if there'll have to be a special request made, or if they're potentially, what I've asked the state is can the state provide us with the booths or a resource to get for, for the booths with a grant? Would be a small one, I'm sure, but that would be better than the town having to have the expense. So stay tuned. We just don't have the answer.
My next agenda item is sign language and card services for the annual town meeting.
So we have some money left in our budget. We are, we can do a few things with it. One of the things we could do would be to put out some literature about different disabilities, perhaps a magnet for people to have on their refrigerators, things like that, that we can have them pass out at the, at the Fat Cracker event or other events that tell people who we are with our phone number, things like that, little calendars. We can venture that around as well. But what I was thinking for this year, because we've done quite a bit with ADA, and I think it's important to keep it on people's radar, is for us to order in advance sign language interpretive services and cart services, which is, you know, the big screen that puts the words up there similar to closed caption. And you obviously need the stenographer to set all that up and do it for our annual town meeting. I think you know, this may not be something, the way we go all the time, there's an expense involved, but I also think it's really important for all of our residents with all that we've done to get a real sense, whoever is at the town meeting and beyond, of this is what it's like to have these services presented. And that way, we also in advance can invite people who might need these services. They just might come because who knows how many people don't come because we don't have these kinds of services. So I wanted to get everyone's thought from all of you, get your ideas, your thinking, yea, nay, whether it's worth exploring and seeing the exact cost, because again, we would have to have at least two sign language interpreters. I'm expecting that the cost for the interpreters would probably be around five or six hundred dollars. And then I'm expecting the cart portion that would use the rest of the money that we have available, which is probably close to a thousand dollars. But I wanted to get your thoughts.
Any comments? My, well, I guess my initial thought is maybe town meeting is a, might be a, I mean, I think it's probably the most appropriate place to have it, but maybe it's also one of the most difficult places to have it presented. I don't know, maybe we start small, especially with the cost factor that's involved. Maybe not necessarily one of our meetings, but the, there's a board of selectmen's meeting that doesn't have a ton of heavy lifting. That might be a good place to present it. As far as the cart services, I know a town meeting is definitely an issue and we'd have to, that'd be a full separate service. I know, Jonathan, you and I have talked about this before, but there is the live transcript feature of Zoom that, you know, essentially gives you closed captioning. So I'd like to see how that feature works as well, because I think if we're talking about, you know, regular commission meetings or board of select meetings, if that feature works well, we're going to turn it on right now and find out. Like pot calling the kettle black, we're not even using it.
While you're, while you're turning it on, in terms of logistics for the, for the interpreter, I would, the reason, one of the reasons I think I would go for the town meeting, and there's no guarantee of this, of course, is that in terms of logistically, where the person is on this, and they'd be on the stage left or right, and what they're doing would not necessarily be any different than selectmen's meeting. As a rule, we know for all intensive purposes that the town meeting could go for hours, but so can the selectmen's meeting. But what I've seen in the few years that I've been going to town meeting is that they usually last between two, 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 three hours, unless there's a hotbed issue, or you need to have a second bite of the apple for a different time. Selectmen's meeting sometimes can go later. And we're paying for time is what we're paying for. So in terms of saving dollars, and again, there's no guarantee here, it would seem to me that town meeting might be less of an expense.
Okay. Just, just to give you a quick tidbit, too. So I just clicked on the live transcript. So Zoom gives you three options, a few options. Assist, assign a participant to type. I will type. Copy the API token for a third party. So you'd actually have to have a third-party CC.
Yep.
Probably app that would do it for you.
Yes.
Would be, probably be voice recognition. So I'm sure even that in curse, some sort of cost. But that's something I think we should just look into in general. So even if like, if, if we wanted to enable live transcription,
Yep.
why'd have to sit here and like be, almost be like a stenographer?
Which is almost impossible.
Yeah, I can't think that.
So MOD Mass Office on Disability has recommendations for public meeting. Well, I think I, I don't have them here today, but I sent them out, in fact, to the whole town about six months ago, to every, every department, every committee, every commission. But that was really how you zoom, exactly where you're looking at now. And how, and ways to do it so that you can enhance public access in Zoom meetings specifically. I, I don't know if Zoom is the way to go for, for a large public meeting like that necessarily, because things could be.
Yeah, the audio is going to be.
Exactly. And it has to be interpreted. And if you have people off in the distance in, in the audience that don't have a microphone or something for a moment, or somebody else, sometimes you can hear people on the stage sometimes.
Yep.
And that might not get picked up. So I guess what I'd like is permission to at least explore the idea of what would be involved for setup. I know I'd have to send some pics or video of the area for the cart service component as well and see what we come back with and then we can discuss it at our next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. I don't think that's necessary, something that we need to pull on.
No, we don't.
I just want to incur an expense at this point, but at least get some figures on what it would cost us.
So Zoom doesn't automatically?
No, you'd have to have, it looks like you would have to send it over to a third party that would do the closed caption. It does, I mean, it does have the option, because even like when I, if you were attending the meeting, not hosting it, you can request that the live transcript be enabled. So that's something I think that we need to think about in general, because if we do have a member of the community who's deaf or hard of hearing and they, and they do request it, and we don't have that, at least available for them. Yeah, you know, that, that could be an issue. So we might want to look, look into what third-party vendors are available to, to do the closed captioning for us. And maybe if it's linked, you know, directly to the water selecting account that we use to host our meetings, it should cover most of the committees.
And we, we can, we can play with it a couple of times, too. We could, you know, book a Zoom meeting for a few minutes here and there and see what it does and how, and how well it works and how well it picks up the audio for transcription and so forth, too.
I think once it goes on to Zoom, though, there's a way in Zoom to make closed caption.
Once it's been recorded.
Yes. I watched something about making your Zoom videos. I don't know how to do it, but.
That's one of the things that I sent out is how to make the closed caption.
Okay.
But.
After the fact.
Yes, but, but the other side of that is it's got to be be able to pick up all the verbal.
Okay, yeah.
So at some of the meetings we have, sometimes in some places, you know, even when the board of selectmen's meeting, sometimes if somebody's off in the back of the room, it doesn't pick it up. And it might be a small thing before they get to the microphone, but it's important sometimes. So I think if we, you know, this is an opportunity, I guess, to also focus on in general enhancement. So that it's another component of what the town does, we can bring to the public.
Yeah, somebody's in the audience, it doesn't pick it up. Last night I asked, what are your question? Who's in the audience? And he wisely, what I'm even thinking, he wisely says, I'm going to go to the microphone so everybody can hear me. You know, he was like over there, microphone's over here, and he realized, because he's watched some meetings on Zoom, so he knows that.
Yeah.
I'm not watching him because I'm at the, I'm at the meeting.
Perfect case of what Mr. Rosario spoke to, is like.
Yeah. He sat down, yeah.
And even simple, you know, when we have our managers' meetings once a month, Nicole, you've been there.
Yeah.
Where somebody will say, you know, can you come up to the microphone? Because the people on Zoom who are, can't hear. So it's the same thing. So I think the next month is worth exploring, three weeks is worth exploring different options. So we can, I can come back or whoever wants to do it with me can come back and have some ideas or recommendations for our next meeting and we can put, put out there and vote on. And I'll get the, the better idea of cost, too, because different interpreters charge different costs depending upon what they're asked to do. But most of their requests would go through the Mass Office of Deaf and Hard Hearing. They prefer to ferret all that rather than have to reach out to private interpreters.
What is the reason behind to having two interpreters?
Because of going like this with your arms and so forth and the phone and the hyper-focus, they generally don't want an interpreter going more than thirty minutes.
Okay.
I imagine two's going at once. That's like, that's seems like a lot.
No, they do thirty, thirty minute intervals.
Gotcha.
So as one moves away, the other one slides in and they keep it going. And that's how it goes.
And at the courthouse, we've had different situations where we would have to sign, sign people because it was different signing or something.
Yes.
So, you know, one person, one type of sign, another person, another type of sign, and realized it was different. So we had to hire two.
Two interpreters.
To translate for us.
Yeah. And what, and that's different because for interpreters, there are different licenses for different interpretations. So for example, when Ken was at the courthouse, those interpreters have to be licensed to do legal interpretation specifically. Then you have license for medical interpretation. And then you have general license, you know, for things like town meetings. You know, but there's all different kinds of licenses required for different things, especially when you get into technicalities of it. So.
And for languages, years ago, when it first started, somebody spoke Spanish, who was called Maria in the clerk's office, come up and interpret. That's not allowing it anymore. You have to have an interpreter. These state workers that go all over state and courts and we do, and it's like two hundred different languages, you know, Chinese.
But it's the same thing like when we go to Boston Children's Hospital, there's like a menu of.
Yeah.
But you got to be licensed.
Right.
For was just Maria, she would come in, she would interpret Portuguese, something you don't speak, but can do it anymore.
In fact, it's interesting, just as an aside in the courts now, when you have an interpreter, whether it's a sign language interpreter or an audio interpreter, you know, for language, it also has to be videoed now. And the reason for that is because if the interpreter makes a mistake on a legal response or in a trial on an answer given, it needs to be able to be reviewed because that's the form of transcript. So, you know, it really, it really does make a difference. But so if it's okay with everybody, try to explore and come back with some answers. Thank you.
Next agenda item is a request for ADA permit forms.
So this came, this is coming about, and I'm thinking because, you know, we had the request from the school for the grass mats, for example. We had the request from Parks and Rec for the grass mats. And of course, Kevin's part of Parks and Rec, so that's, that's pretty informal. But, and this, this is actually something we can think of now, or we can wait and incorporate it into the new website. From what I was saying earlier, I think anytime anybody's going to want to request anything, promise I use the grass masses as the example. They should have to put the request in writing, make it formal in that respect. How many do you think you need? How many square feet? So that we know what we're providing, who's going to pick it up, who's going to drop it off, who's going to bear responsibility? These things are expensive. And, you know, none of us want them to be thrown around, left behind, lost. We want accountability for them. And I think the town has a right to expect that, obviously. And I, you know, I'm not disrespecting anybody when I say that. I mean, I, Kevin knows what he's doing. Kevin's part of this commission and Kevin works in Parks and Rec. I trust Kevin to do everything the way it's supposed to be done. I don't know if I trust other people who are not familiar with them. They don't know you can't bend them and fold them and other things you can't do, or if you have to put them together with a zip tie so that when you, you don't cut the edges and slice it and so forth.
Well, even that, just even just laying them down and having a lip where somebody becomes a tripping hazard.
Exactly.
There's a certain level of liability there with using it as well.
There is. So, and so, you know, suppose you put them down and there's a big bump in it or something like that, and somebody trips over that bump. There's a responsibility and liability. And I think there has to be a disclaimer in the form for lack of assumption of liability for COD in the town as well. So, and that the, you know, the event organizers are taking their own risk. Now, obviously, we would offer, if they need just to help them put them down and show them how to do it, we're visiting ahead of time and say, where do you want to put it? This won't work here. And, and I know we would do that, but I think it's important to do it because this is a product that's going to have to be moved around wherever it's going to be used. So if anybody has any thoughts on that, be good to hear. And again, something we can come back with in next meeting in the draft, because even if it's a draft, we might want to use it in the website or start it.
Yeah.
Especially during the summer.
I can drop the form. And I think we also need to be, have a spot in there, too, because I think it was known when we wrote the grant that we were going to use a certain number. We still don't know exactly what that number is, but a certain number for the community garden. So we need to have people that are requesting them for a permanent installation.
Yep.
Versus borrowing them.
Yeah.
The other things like a cost for replacement, so if something, if one does get damaged, I think the parties who utilize them should be responsible.
Responsible and I.
To replace them.
I do think, and I do think when we did the grant, I think we indicated roughly about forty would be used, or twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
For the, the gardens.
Correct.
So, but that still leaves a hundred and twenty, which is a lot of that, frankly, you know, you know. These are not inexpensive. These are eighty dollars each.
What is, what's the measurements?
Three and a half by five and a half.
Yeah.
And the ones at the garden.
Same measure, really?
Yes, what we'll do is, actually, Mr. Ferry has to put down a little bit more stone dust on like one end of the garden. Once he has that down and compacted, so in that situation, the way I have the zip tie, so we'll zip tie them together, but also there's spikes.
I'm saying one of them.
I mean, they're not really, you'd have to really grab them and tug them, especially once they're all tied together and move them. But still, it's like you want to at least spike the ends and the edges so you don't get roll up and.
Like a white six inch, you know, six inch depth spike, almost just to go down. It's like, think of a big fat nail, kind of.
Yeah.
Just to hold them in place, along with that, yes.
Yeah, you know, almost use like a rail of tight nails, just of that nature, so to hold them down.
Could we create like a do and don'ts type of like document for folks that want to use the mats? Like, just because there's some things that you guys have mentioned that I wouldn't have thought of. Ways not to bend them, but you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think that is a good idea.
Yeah, we could have like, you know, what would you say, you know, five or six do's and don'ts, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, a simple thing. It sounds silly, but if somebody spills a soda on it, you know, it's going to degrade it over time. And then it gets sticky and it attracts, I hate to say, little tiny insects.
Yep.
So we want them to hose it down. We want them to, we want, yeah.
Yeah, depending on the, well, I can just say, for instance, I don't know if anything formal has come through, but I was asked about them because, you know, just talking throughout town, I think the PTO has.
I was just going to say, they want to use it for an event.
For a color run, which the, the kids run around and they throw, I don't know, it's like chalk or paint or whatever, they, they throw stuff at the kids.
Yeah.
Which is like, I'm glad that they're thinking about accessibility, but it's like, they're going to have to be, you know, thoroughly washed down, which is going to be a pretty, pretty big task.
Yeah, and probably flipped over and washed again.
Yes.
Like that, so.
Yeah.
That's then to the event. That's, then the event is not until June, but again, I think it makes sense to come back at our main meeting and have. A draft of a form, we can, we can all look at, make a few changes and put it into play. Does, something like that can, has to be approved by the board of selectmen ultimately.
I would think so, and I, and I would think that you would want that anyway for some coverage, if something happens or it's misinterpreted or whatever. Whether or not we have to have Tom come and take a look at it, just make sure everything's proper. I'm not sure, but I think it should be run by either.
Okay, so our next, our next meeting is gonna be, I believe it's the fifth of May, which is the Thursday. So if we can come back with something by then.
Bring up the second Wednesday for the next meeting.
Yes, potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does that make sense? And I, Kevin, I can work on it with you or Nicole, or we can, we can pass it back. Well, we, yeah, we'll put it in the Dropbox that way. Anybody have, we can all see it and make edits on week, week notes. Okay. I'm just trying to think, Jonathan, what's the best format to use as far as a fillable document? And that would be accessible. In the end. Probably a fillable PDF or fillable Google Doc for now, until we have the new website. Yeah, I know like Google Forms is probably the easiest way to do it. I just. Yeah, I mean, Google Forms is actually becoming more accessible for me. Through a new piece of software that I just got. Still gonna be a huge learning curve, but I'm learning it. I get about an hour of training every other day on it. So I think we could create a Google Doc that's fillable for now, until we have the new website, and then of course we'll be on the website. So, yeah. That works. And I'm gonna put a bunch of time into cleaning up the Dropbox site, which. I have to take full responsibility for not being up to date and kept clean. So, no, Jonathan. And our next.
Communication board.
You wanna talk about communication work? Yes, so I, through Parks and Rec, I reached out to the Doug Foodie Foundation about a month ago. They have. Not a fun way, they have an initiative right now where they're trying to get one augmented communication board in every town and Massachusetts. So essentially you built this, we put in a request and. And I actually, I put in two for Parks and then the P T O also put in one for the schools and. A representative from the Foodie Foundation reached back out to us and said, for now, because of funding purposes, that their goal is really. To have one in every town by the end of the year and then expand upon it. So we were awarded one of these boards for. That will be utilized at the community playground. Could you just explain what it is? Yes, so what it is, it's essentially, it's a picture board. It's got, has pictures and words showing actions. Expressions and feelings, and the intention is for any person that is non-verbal, so that they can communicate with it here. So it's, you know. Playing on the playground and you wanna stop, but you can't say, you can walk over to the board and say, stop, or I want to use the swing. So that it's, it's a pretty good size. It's essentially a banner, and I think what Parks and Rec will probably do to preserve it is we build something so it's more of a permanent covered installation. So, but because we tried, I would, I think the, for now, the community playground makes the most sense because it's the most heavily used. Hopefully, all goes well with the rest of the process for the not lighting the playground, and I'd like to, especially because that's gonna be an actual accessible. Inclusive playground, I'd like to have one there as well, if, if and when that happens. And then I think it is. A good idea to have it at the school as well, especially because it's the way that the school district is set up now. Most of the children that are on I E Ps and, and would. It would, they, they still go to the D E S. Once you go to the middle school, it's a little bit different story, but there is a need for it there as well. So I kind of bounced back and forth with the P T O because the representative from the Foodie Foundation had told us. If we, if, if they don't call it a purchase, if we made a donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars, they would send us additional boards for the different. Locations. I think my original thought would be that it would, might have been a good idea or something that the C O D could fund. Our work here. But depending on what we have, you know, for a budget, I think it's also something, if it's not something that we can do through the C O D budget, it's certainly something that Parks and Rec. Have to take through their budget. When do we expect them to be here? I should be here anytime. I think I, she said it takes about a week to ten days, and that was a little over a week ago that I got the confirmation. I would award the one for the community playground. My, my personal opinion is, I hear what you're saying about potentially having it at the playground down here at Town Hall, because it gets a lot of use. But at the same time, I think temporarily here, potentially to have it there, absolutely. I also honestly think that once the new North Titan Playground is done, assuming it's approved, and I'm certainly hoping it will be. I think it would be really valuable to move it up there, because. And even if C O D at that point, it'll be after July first, and C O D could potentially pay for. You know, a Plexiglas framing for it. I wasn't so much concerned about the edge, I was thinking just more the board itself, not the act, not all the associated. You know, construction that goes with it. Well, I'm thinking even with, just for even, so even if you leave that alone, that for location, 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 I think that having it at the. The new North Titan Playground, where it has so much accessible equipment with it, and accessible resource to it. That, and because it's new as well, I think that a lot of parents, assuming they can park. Are gonna go up there and start using it. And what better way to kind of cap off the accessible playground? Than with having the board there? Just might be, I don't know. Well, I think my ultimate goal is to have them in both places. Well, no, I agree. I mean, the other choice is we can make a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars and get another one. Well, that's what I, that's what I mean. And I don't, I don't think we necessarily need to, because she said it usually takes about, if you, you know, if anybody decided that they wanted to make a donation. So that we could acquire a second and possibly a third board for the elementary school as well. Which we're also working on to playground plans for them. Then it takes like two to three weeks to get a board. And obviously, like the construction of the not played playground, I mean, I think. At the best case scenario would be late summer. Yep. So it's not like we're up against a gun to get a board. I just wanted to kind of bring it up and talk about it. Very cool. You guys have any?
I, I think we already have more than one. I would want to run by Mike Mull, though. I'm not sure that we can use town monies to make donations, so that would be my concern, whether we. Possibly have a fundraiser for or something like that. I don't know, like, I, I feel a little concerned.
Yeah.
Maybe because everybody can say their favorite charity, whatever.
Right.
They would want money to be donated, so I'm not sure if that's possible. But I do think we need more than one, whether we. Fundraiser or something to raise the money. I'm all for it. And like you said, the one Titan Playground. The board on it on June sixth and at the passes, it's not gonna be up until July first. It's gonna take a while.
Yep, right.
And you're saying in the summer, I think next spring, like I really, as you, you're in that kind of field. You know, somebody says, I'll do this, I'll take a week to do this, don't take twice as long, so. I mean, there'll be hip cups and all that kind of stuff, so. I, I do think we're right, get through, I think the schools, the school, whether the P T O can make their own.
That's, that's what the thing was. I think the P T O has a key, because they are a fundraiser group. They have the ability to just make that decision on their own.
Yeah.
And then also something that's coming up. So Parks has a meeting on Saturday, and we're gonna discuss finally. Establishing of, you know, friends that we want to explore establishing a friend group. So all this stuff might work itself out before we even get to that point anyway. But yeah, I do agree that, yeah, when you're talking about a donation, it's a little bit different situation, not purchased. Not to say that we couldn't ultimately, I mean, not that we wanna root around the foundation that's doing good. I mean, hopefully. I think they do have a little emblem of where it came from too, so hopefully the people will choose to support that foundation on their own. Once they see the boards, but even if we could go to the printing company and just buy because of the technicality of it being a donation versus a purchase. Yeah. You know. Thank, that's awesome, Ken. Thank you for, for sharing that experience.
Thanks to Jen, I have this commission, reorganization.
Any thoughts there? I'd like to make a motion that all positions that's a clear beginning. Explain, so we can reveal, that's the commission.
I can't second it, sir.
I know. I have no objection to that.
I think the chairman just stepped down a second.
Yep. He did.
Yeah.
Any discussion? No discussion?
No, I'm sorry. Shaking my head.
Current chair for the next, whoever knows what can't see it. That, that, that's okay. So there is a motion on the floor to vacate all the positions for reorganization. Do I have a second?
You second.
I second, let me just. Get real. I'm gonna call the, the motion. I know, Ken, you cannot vote Kevin. I. Nicole.
I.
And Jonathan stepping down, I. So then the next part of the conversation that's passed unanimously, thank you, will be to discuss how you would like to reorganize and what you're thinking. I'd like to nominate myself as the clerk of the commission. We could have just added a clerk to the position, I think, but. Well, I think we originally, so like, like, when, a little over, what, about a year and a half ago, we had, you know, when we still had Jen and stuff, we had. Had this, so it's like, we haven't re, or we've lost members and we haven't reorganized it, so just to make everything official. I was, I wasn't, I wasn't going after Jonathan's championship and the chair. No. Yeah, it's an aggressive, it was an aggressive motion. Well, I didn't say no. So, truthfully, let me just be very clear. I think. If, if you're interested in being the clerk, I would take your offer to be clerk in a heartbeat. I think we all know that your heart and soul is in the commission for a lot of reasons. And you've done an enormous amount of work, as we all have, for it. So. And a lot of what we do cross, cross, crosses the mantra of what you do with Parks and Rec too. So I think it would be awesome, just saying. You are the, if, if so, potentially you would be clerk. Does anybody else wanna be chair, or should I remain chair?
You should remain chair.
Okay. And Ken, you're gonna still be the liaison. We're not kicking you out either.
Yeah, I couldn't totally believe it the next year.
And then, and then we're gonna appoint you as the. So get ready, get ready, Ken.
Yeah.
So, is that your motion?
There was a motion. By Kevin that he be clerk. It was not seconded.
So we have a motion on, on the floor for Kevin to be clerk. Do I have a second from Nicole? Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call the motion, Nicole.
I.
Jonathan stepping down, I, Kevin. I. Ken is unable to vote, unfortunately. And since we vacated all positions, we also still need to revote for chairperson. And I will nominate myself as the chairperson. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call that for a vote as well. Kevin? I. Nicole?
I.
Jonathan, I, and that's unanimous as well. So. I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Nicole as the vice chair. Absolutely. You're okay with that? So I would just have a quick discussion. So if we, and hopefully at some point we get some more members, essentially. Then you would just, you would chair the meeting, so just really go over the agenda. And I think it's just, you're like a safety net. It would be, so even if I'm not here as well. And secondly, one of the, one of the thoughts. When the commission was first put together, was when we had a full. Number of commission members at the table, and we were in full swing, that eventually the coordinator. Of the, the C O, the A D coordinator for the town would step away from the chairmanship. And then you would have all the commission members, when they chair, vice chair, clerk, you know, like that. We haven't gotten there yet. I'm hoping that we do in the near future. Not because I wanna step away from it, because technically I think that's. The way it should go eventually. The Commonwealth is perfectly fine, and I say that because we had to make sure it was okay. For me as the A D coordinator to also be chair. They're perfectly fine with it. They're not against it at all. But again, I think the original plan was eventually, when we have a full complement of members. And we're holding that after one year was to, for me to step away, or whoever the A D coordinator is to step away. And we weren't in the advisory capacity. So.
How many members are we supposed to have?
I, oh gosh, I wanna say seven. Technically, or is it, no, it's five. It is five. That's how we maintain our. Yep, that's what. Yes, I think it was a map, it wasn't a, a minute, but there was a max, maximum of seven, yeah. Yeah. So. Nicole, you're okay with vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Yeah, I motion.
I mean, you made a motion.
So I'll second it then. Okay. So we have a discussion on Nicole as vice chair for the C O D. It just don't want all the power.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm gonna come with a crown next time.
You can have the gavel, but I don't have it. That'd be really cool. So there's a motion on the floor for Nicole to be the vice chair of the Titan Commission on Disability. I'm gonna call the vote, Kevin. I. Nicole.
I.
Jonathan stepping down, I, unanimous again, thank you. Appreciate it. There's the reorder. Finally, yeah. It's a long time coming. Yeah.
Wait, can I ask a question real quick about back to the mats? What do they officially call those mats that are on the ground?
Well, that's a good question, because like we refer to them as grass mats, because that's like, that's the brand. If, and if you Google grass mats, that like them and one other company come up, it would that, I. If you Google accessible mats, that's the. That's what comes up. So I think it's like, it's almost like it, the brand has named, it named itself. And the intention, I think, and just. For anybody that watches the recording, we, or just for our information, the reason why it's called a grass map is because it has the ability, the one. Create an accessible path on grass, grass can grow through it, and then you can mow it, so it like still looks like grass, but there's a path later, so I think that's how. Yeah. These big little holes like this. Yes. Yeah, Nicole got to see him on Saturday.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Our next.
Next item is. May visit to P T O.
So. Kevin and I have been invited by Rachel, who is now one of the members of the Parks and Rec Commission and on the P T O. To visit the school in May, on May third. And. Excuse me, Kevin and I haven't specifically discussed what we're gonna focus on and talk about yet. I didn't even like her, but I thought just you have to go here and suddenly count. Really? Yeah. Oh, well, Rachel told me earlier. Guilty, guilty by association. Yeah, she said earlier, Ken, that you said you were bringing in, I told her that even if you refused, I would still show up. I'm glad my new commission members already out would be, make some things. Oh, she obligated you before, before, before they even had the election just to do that. So it's on May third, if that works for your calendar, if not, I will go by, go by myself without you and. Now that works. I'm happy to help, I'll support the C O D. And I think that you were gonna also do a presentation and talk to her about autism, or is that different? I am? Yes. You didn't know that either? And everybody's got my.
Rachel said.
Everybody's got my agenda full of great. So I was, I was told that you would be coming to talk a little bit about autism. Well, I think part of the, maybe we were gonna talk about the, the communication. That's probably what it is. Okay. The communication. The word used was autism, that's why I specifically. Which I mean, they're, you know, they're typically known for the use, you know, because of. Autistic. Or autistic. Yes. But. I mean, they have more, they serve more. Well, keep that, keep that on your radar, because that's your, that's your, your conversation piece for the day. What was it, May? May third.
It'd be great to look for new members there.
Yes, absolutely. We're always, yes. And then I'm gonna be speaking about, just obviously share a little about who we are, what we've done, what we wanna do. I'm gonna really wanna focus on ways we can support the P T O and support parents. So I wanna potentially offer the possibility of putting together through their health program in June. Something on different disabilities for the kids, and we can inspect that then if they're interested. And secondly would be. For September, or starting in late August, we've together a small workshop series with the. Probably the Federation for Children's Special Needs, and that would focus specifically on how to understand I E Ps. And different types of educational plans, I S Ps, five oh fours, what the rights of the family are, do. And different types of educational plans, I S Ps, five oh fours, what the rights of the family are, do those responsibilities, how to advocate. And that's a workshop series that will probably be three to four sessions. It'll be free of charge. And we would have parents sent for that ahead of time, but I'd like to be able to coordinate that with the Federation for Children's Special Needs. And have them on board with that as well. Because I think it's really important for parents to be educated about. What it takes for an I U P and I S P, how to understand it, how to review it, how to read it, how to appeal it, how to ask for other parts of it and so forth. And most parents honestly don't, they're not familiar with it.
They're complicated. It can be.
It can be great. It can be daunting and complex and. Very often, you know, the school department very often has one perspective and viewpoint. And the parent or parents or guardians have a different perspective or viewpoint. And I think people need to know. How to advocate for the children's needs as much as possible, but also who to reach out for, who to reach out to some of the service organizations that can support parents. When they're, when they're going through the process and they're going to an I P. You know, it's intimidating when you're a parent, you're sitting there and there's five or six school staff, seven school staff, giving different reports and you're the parent. And. You've got all these people telling you one thing, but you're thinking something else. And maybe they're right, maybe they're wrong, but. It's Kevin knows and I know from having children with disability, it can be very intimidating. So I think it's important to have these workshop series put together. I wanna present that to them and if they're for it, then. They can assign someone to work with me. You know, we can put it together.
It'd be nice to.
Talking about really putting together I E P.
Right. Well, I'm just thinking too, if the, I think that it would be nice to get the P T O involved in a way to help. Bring the C, CPAC back to life.
Yeah.
Because that has been so defunct. I mean, that was a great resource for people. Maybe because that's really the appropriate channel.
Yes, it is.
More than the P T O. So it'd be good if maybe. There's probably members of the P T O that have kids on I P that would be interested. I mean. Maybe pull a little double duty to get that that back going. I think it's important too, when you're talking about I E Ps and I know. You know, financially, sometimes it's not an option for people, but the importance of like you say about how difficult it is to face that group of people and having an advocate.
Yeah.
You know. An unbiased advocate.
And there are free advocates, for example, through the Talk and Family Resource Center. They will provide free advocates and so forth. But if people don't know it. They don't know where to reach out. They don't know what to do.
Well, it's, yeah, it's funny too, and just from personal experience with I E Ps. Typically, this, if you have, if. You work things correctly, the school will give you exactly what you need.
Yeah.
And want.
Yeah.
If you get caught up in the process though, and you don't ask for the right things, you're gonna get. Nowhere close to what you need.
No.
And then you're also gonna, you know, throw stones at the school, which is, which they're only. They're not gonna offer anything more than what you, you don't ask for.
No. And they're not gonna offer any more than what they think they can do.
Correct.
Frankly, especially in the past couple of years with COVID and things online. And all the things of going back to school and so many remote things now, and technology changing and kids having pro books or other things that they're using at different levels. It's all changed. The whole world of. How children with different disabilities are worked with or taught or understood. Has changed. And honestly, I don't know that anybody really has a handle on it yet, but parents need to know. If nothing else, what their rights and responsibilities are. So I'd love to see CPAC form again too. I don't know. How realistic that is in the short term, but in the long term, I think it.
Well, they tried regionalizing because it was supposed to be Titan, Somerset, Swan, Berkeley. It might have been one other community.
But there was never any follow.
But it's just, I I know that I was just talking about this with my wife the other day about like, they had a meeting posted. And then like three months prior, and then you've never heard it.
No.
And you haven't been to find it.
I had put us on that. It said, sent the email back and said, we would love to participate. Please keep us prized. Nothing. So. Anyway, that's on May third.
Okay.
To your calendar.
I'll prepare my speech.
Cheer up. Okay, next, sir.
Committee of Lords of Time, that's best buddies updated.
You wanna go for?
Yeah, I can just give you real quick. So I, we pretty much have everything. Official. We have a portal where people can sign up. We've been sharing the link and stuff. It has been slow. Yeah, it's just been slow. I, I think what, when you and I. I think what we really need to do is. Is probably create an event for the group, even though there's some stuff I'm gonna look back at like just best buddies in Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Like there was. Like a best buddies walk, but it wasn't like you didn't specifically have to go on site, like each individual group could do it there. I think once we create an event and we all like, with the people that we do have, who have signed up so far. Get out there and then you kind of draw in some members of the public, then it will start to roll, but it's been.
Do you have numbers of like how many? Volunteers and how many individuals?
So right now it's, so I have five approved volunteers. There's a couple that kicked out because we had this initial conversation about the age. So we had a couple of younger folks that had tried to. Join through membership and we reached out to them. We don't want, we didn't discourage them from participating when we have events because that's perfectly allowable. But for matching purposes, you wanna have everybody eighteen plus and obviously, you know, co- close in age. And then what we, and we only have one person with I D D that has signed up so far.
I sent out an email at work a couple of weeks ago asking if I could. Give out the flyers at work. I didn't hear back, but I'll ask, I'll physically ask tomorrow instead of sending out an email because I think that's an easier way. They are reposting it constantly on social media, but if you take away any boundaries from people, it makes it so much easier. Like here's a flyer. I just use the Q R code, I go there like.
Right.
Especially then if it gets home to more of the caregivers and so.
Right.
They may see.
Follow through.
Because all, everyone was very excited at program, but also I don't know if any of their caregivers ever found out about it. Like they're excited, but how much communication did they have with anyone at home or at their residence or whatever?
Yeah.
So does it, does it make sense yet? And I'm assuming the answer is not yet. I was gonna say to try to pencil in like a morning. On a Saturday. Or something to do like a short hike. Somewhere in town at one of those trails or something to do a different kind of event.
Well, I think.
Or should we?
I'd like to get some more I D D folks. I mean, just one.
Yeah, at least to create some sort of balance.
Yeah.
That's, that's almost gonna be intimidating in itself.
We all wanna be your friend. So, well, let's see if we get some more folks on board.
I mean, it could do, it could be, and it'd be like the bachelor best buddy. But I think like, that's why I was thinking, because best buddies has been international and, you know, just mass around it in particular. I've been posting, there's like some walks coming up and like they're kind of. Some of the events are digital, some of them are in person. But I think even if it was just. The vol, even just the volunteer folks that we show, if we did something like that, it gives us a chance to kind of draw some other people out from the community. As well, I mean, well, it's a word of mouth is always gonna be. You know, take precedent or.
If we can send a link over to the inter parent also.
Yeah.
And ask them to put it on the announcements for the next couple of.
Sports. I agree to it and not to like, I don't, not, not to draw attention to like. Us doing it, but more to spread the word. It's gonna be nice to get the Gazette to do something. I mean, because that reaches a lot of people. I read Gazette articles that have nothing to do.
I can get Mike Patricio a call.
Yeah.
And see if he wants to do something with you.
Yeah.
I also. The Council on Aging, I was wondering if they would be interested in, I mean, in sixty. And older, there's a lot of people that are retired that are in this age range that may wanna do this volunteering. So I didn't know if we wanted to reach out to them to see if they could. Put in, I don't know, the strawberry. I never remember.
I mean, there's individual I D D that are in there.
Yeah, so they might even have, yeah, they might have folks on either side. So that would be interesting.
You guys don't get the strawberry, but.
I, I do because of the previous residency at my house.
We're, we're so close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what's the program they run at the high school then? Because I've been there at the graduation and they'll say.
That's different.
So also students been involved with best buddies for three years or whatever.
So this is just an age continuation of it. So best buddies will run, if you can go from elementary. School right through the whole system, but that, tho- those are all school based chapters. And then there are college based chapters as well. And then. Very rarely. Community, you know, citizens chapters. Like I think I said when I originally announced that we're only the sec, well, not the third one in the entire state. Both, one is specific to a program in Newton. And then the other one is just Boston, like just in general. So there's literally. Nothing as far as citizens chapters. I mean, all like, there's a ton in the high schools and things like that. I think it's just one of those things when you. If you get out of high school and you don't go to college, you kind of, you just kind of fade out of your life. So.
Doug, what's his last name? Rash. The A D coordinator of high school. He, he, they had a pretty strong best buddies program, volunteer program at the high school for several years. And actually, Tom, I believe Tom Brady was very involved and very vested as well. And that helped to draw students and volunteers. I know that they had everything on hold because of just coming back to school this year and everything getting up to speed and various things and stuff like that. I actually saw him the other day at something for my grandkids. And he said he wanted to get together with us to talk about it, start to make plans for the future again. So I'll include you, Kevin, and Nicole too. And maybe invite him to a meeting to share some thoughts with us and talk about it.
Well, it may be good too to let, like, because again, if you have groups of kids either with or without I D D that have been participating in the program throughout high school. And they're not gonna go to college, or they're going to college local that doesn't have a chapter, we have a place for you. So, you know.
You think the firecracker, we should have a table at the firecracker event. I, I know you, you've already, you particularly has a lot of things. You don't need to bother that already that day. So. Is that?
When we talked about having a table for C O D.
Yes, maybe.
Yes. Information there.
Try to do the same thing that we did last year, like, so like, even if Coop wants to come and participate again, we'll just group everybody, like those. Individuals together.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I haven't talked to Coop yet to see if they're interested, but if they were, then we'd have the C O D with best buddies and then Coop and then. I think that would be good.
Yeah, I mean, and we have a little bit of a chunk of time where hopefully we can kind of get the ball rolling with the best buddies a little bit more. And like, then it doesn't necessarily have to be me. I mean, we have, like I said, we, at least we have five. Representatives, five members right now. So I mean, if we start having a few events between now and then, maybe they can start to speak about the program. So.
Very cool.
Yeah, I love that Brady guy was you were talking about.
I don't either. Past tense.
Yeah.
I heard it does a lot with Tampa Bay, that's for at least.
Every time.
Next item.
Yeah, review of town policies.
So. Ken and I met earlier today, actually. And. Started going over the, the policy manual in town for. The personnel policies a little bit and a little bit also on other policies in town as well. And. We have a lot more work to do, but what I'm thinking is. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. Is that what we wanna do is make sure the policy is clear on availability. Of how material can be disseminated. That's really what the role of the A D A component in the policies would be. Every policy doesn't have to have it within it. But the different types of policies in general have to have an overview. So for example, for personnel policy. We have to make it clear how it's available, what are the alternative formats it's available in, what if somebody needs to have it read to them. As a public record or public accommodation, things like that. So that would be one policy. The second policy would focus on making sure that. The different committees, which is there, but it's not as clear as it should be. Again, different committees and commissions that have meetings, the way their public postings are, are announced, so that everything is there and available and how to reach out. Different resources they might need. Some are similarly to other town departments for things that they provide. In town for, whether it's the board of assessors or the planning board or anybody who wants materials of the town in alternative formats. That would be the third policy. The process for how to get that, how to make the request and so forth. I think, again. We can work on putting up this all together and we're gonna, so probably three, maybe four different types of policy. But. Ultimately, once we have. Our new website, again, we'll have the policies there, but we can also have direct links so that if they, if they need to fill out a request for. An accessible accommodation for something, they can make the request to the department and it can go to the department and to see, and to the A D A coordinator. So that we make sure that accommodations are met. So again, this is just preliminary. We sat down, talked about it a little while today. And read a couple of the documents to see what, what they're looking like. And I think we know where we need to go with it for going back and forth with some drafts. But we started the process at least, and that's important. Anything you wanna add or?
No, I think you explained everything. Some members of the Titan Lions clubs already coming here. So once we, next thing is review improvements for March third.
All right. So here's the real. This is why I'm glad that we put the reorganization before minutes. I don't have the minutes from the third. I don't, I didn't get them.
It's okay.
I literally found the paper at like ten o'clock last night. I usually, I always do it on my own, because I can't lose this. Like searching and searching for a piece of paper. And by that time, I was like. I don't know what's the next to do for.
Okay.
So we'll have to do that.
I postponed to next time and now we have a third.
So I could really.
Next item is beginning planning for the C O D this fashion in twenty twenty two. That's firecracker.
So we talked a little bit about that already today. I think it would be great if we could all come back at our next meeting, maybe with three ideas that we each have. That we would like to, we're not gonna have, you know, twelve different things at the table or twelve different activities. But honestly, it would be nice to just each come back with three, three things and see what we come up with. And put it together. So that's my suggestion. Any thoughts on?
No, I think that's great.
Okay.
Next item is begin thinking about simple A D A way there's activities we can offer our schools and junior this year.
And I think we touched on that a little bit already too, but. There may be little things that we can do with my ears issue. I'm sorry. There's some other things we can do with the school even that are informal. And I don't know about that until we have conversation with them. I wanted to contact the principals, at least of the, of all three schools and see if there's any things that. They would let us come in and do or have available or maybe put up some posters even on walls about A D A and with, with children and various things. Maybe rules of the etiquette rules on a poster, things like that for kids. When they see a service dog or a guide dog or a person who's using sign language or again, a child who's reading, maybe. That's in, explains what dyslexia is or, you know, autism. Maybe there are some simple big posters we could just put up for a couple of weeks or something in each of the schools.
At least the, the whole. Service dog, I think, because that's, you know, everything goes well and we get a comfort dog, which I think is awesome.
Yeah.
That creates like a huge. Difference in, because you can go up and squeeze and hug it.
Oh, absolutely.
Touch the comfort dog. You can't do that with service dogs. Especially for younger kids. It causes a little bit of a confusion.
Yes.
So they have like the differences in like, we have the best, like, because obviously the best is different.
Yeah.
And things like that. So.
So I was, I was gonna reach out and see if the principals will give us, if nothing else, some space and some more space to put up some posters. And then if they can, maybe that's something the teachers can discuss with kids. As well. I don't know if they're gonna tie that in or maybe that's asking too much. But even if we can get permission to take one wall in a hallway. And. Get posters from the State Department of Education or some disability organizations, which I'm sure they would send us. So I don't think anybody else has any thoughts on.
You know, just on the C N I government, brother, she had many C N I, C N I doctors. Lady was his first one and when her brother was living at the home. When it's on the harness, we can't touch, can't touch the dog. It takes the harness off, like he said, Ken, you wanna take Lady out? The harness would not be on. I can take it out. I can pet it. I can do all that kind of stuff. But once the harness is on.
They know it's.
The dog knows it's working. It's supposed to be working. But the comfort dog, I think it's a great idea that the police departments come up with a donation of the dog, they got training, pre-training for the dog. And kids are gonna love it. My dog's my comfort dog, so I know exactly how the kids.
Well, it was like, you saw how excited they were with Somerset brought there.
Yeah. So next agenda item is to set the next three meetings. We've agreed though, that's the second Thursday.
We've agreed normally is the first Thursday.
So it's the first Thursday.
Normally is the first Thursday.
I just have something about make that. That single in my eye. So either could we do a different day or could we possibly start earlier or? Something.
This is for May?
Yeah.
I'm up for starting earlier. I don't know how that works for Kevin though, because this. How much earlier are you thinking of?
Well, I get four.
Yeah, I mean, we can just be conscious that we wanna keep it short.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So we'll keep a very short agenda and we'll just cover the things that we want to.
Yeah, I would appreciate it.
I'm so like. Forty percent Irish, my guy had to go to C B C meeting on.
See, I would have known. See, I would have not, I would have been like, sorry you guys, unless this get it switched, they can't because it's town.
So if we did four to like four forty five, is that okay?
I mean, four to five is fine.
Okay.
Um.
All right, that's fine.
Okay, I wanna say it's a thing coming then, then. But that would be at six, so.
Is that okay for you, four to five?
It, it would be okay.
Yeah, so we'll have May fifth, June second. And July seventh.
Yeah.
You, you know, who's gonna run this by, uh, Leanne, so make sure this phone is available.
I will. Well, normally she hasn't available.
Yeah, I think we've set it up now where we have recurring. The time.
Yeah, she was asking, she mentioned something to Ken about, she wasn't aware, and I explained that we did give her the schedule for the whole year and I have the emails back and forth, but I'll touch base with her anyway. I'll send the email as a friendly reminder.
We in four o'clock one.
Except the next week will be at four o'clock.
No.
Not next week, next month.
I was here the other day, it was before four, there were no classes here. The other thing is, uh, prime time is on our agenda for next week, so who knows if it's open in. We'll play it by ear, obviously we're gonna change it, I'm okay with it, if it's not, if we can't have it. At four o'clock that day, if we put it following, if it's okay, the group, following Thursday.
All right. So potentially that, potentially that twelve.
Yeah. Well, it's, uh, the, the second, the second and the seventh, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I knew he said.
And Kevin, so in July. Yeah, for, for the July seventh date, is that okay for you because you have two days later is the firecracker. Sure.
Set up till the morning of anything.
I know, but you know.
And I have the new, uh, new ambitious convention, so.
Yeah, she's signing you up for everything.
James Taylor on the third, Dick, well, chicks, Dicksey chicks on the fifth. So if I haven't got a concept of the seventh.
Very cool. Reese James Taylor.
Uh, Tanglewood. And we, we ordered the tickets around to see James Taylor three year, and don't you like, two weeks ago, he came out like. July first is gonna be at the P pack, I know Dunkin Donuts.
Yeah.
So we get a room, I mean, Tanglewood, no lyrics.
It's all right, it's a chance to get away.
Yeah.
Anything else? Before we adjourn, I just wanna please remind everybody, um. We need members. We really do, and we're all doing a great job, but we need new members and new blood and new ideas. Uh, to keep it going.
That's one thing I can keep trust, stop pushing on the Facebook, one, share our agendas so people know that we're meeting, so, and two, just push it for new membership.
Um, just wanna keep that in everybody's head, other than that, I will make a motion that we adjourn at. We'll talk to you here, five forty eight P M. Do I have a second? Thank you, I'll take a vote, Kevin to adjourn.
Right.
Nicole to adjourn.
Hi.
Unofficially to adjourn.
Yes.
And Jonathan to adjourn, stepping down, I, off for three and a half, eyes have it, thank you, we're adjourned.
Yes, but you have to do it tonight.